Did you say that? Line six.
Oh, item six for audit, the I T. Oh, yeah, it doesn't come up until we do actual work. It won't come up until the sentence is done.
All right, the regular meeting of Mayor of the City of Port Island, City Council, City of Port Island, Louisiana, on the date of January 12, 2023. It's at 5:40 P. M., Council Chamber, Third Floor, City Hall. East person of society before in the council chambers, which agenda item they wish to comment on. If they're not seated in the council chamber, when the agenda item is heard, they will be notified by an officer committed to council chambers to address the agenda item. Agenda, please silence all electronic devices. Agenda number one, call up to order. Agenda number two, pledge allegiance. He's paying for the page. Okay, troop fifteen, leaders in the page.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda three, roll call.
We have a call on there, Ms. Gordon's absent. They may already be logged for attendance.
Need your roll call?
Go ahead, they did it on their computer, you have a call on Ms. Gordon's absent.
Agenda four, approve of amendments, a regular meeting of June 14, 2023. I move motion of Councilman Brown.
There's a correction on the minutes on the last paragraph of the vote for the substitute motion. There was two nays, which were Mr. Hubble and Mr. Revere, and three yays, and it was mistaken. We've got to correct it.
What's it say?
The last, the second to the last paragraph of the substitute motion. There were two, two nays, three, two yays, three nays. The substitute's motion that Mr. Revere made, Mr. Revere and Mr. Hubble voted yea. Mrs. Gordon, Mrs. Lacy, and Mr. Brown voted ney.
Second substitute motion.
So that's the correction. So whoever makes the motion needs to make it with corrections.
All right, so I moved approved amended minutes for June 14, 2023, City Council, whatever.
I got motion of Minister Brown to approve the corrections to the minutes.
Say.
I got a second by Councilman Revere, any objections? Hear enough?
You're supposed to be naming the votes. Can you see your vote? There you go. Four yays, Mrs. Gordon is absent. Motion passes. There's another notation of the mayor on item number six, the word audit is misspelled. It should be A U T I T. I don't know if we need to make any more corrections.
So noted. All right, agenda five, public comments. Comments from the public are allowed according to the Louisiana Vice Statute 42:11, Section 2, 34, and specifically related to agenda items to be considered during the meeting. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. And Councilor, I want to do at this particular time, I don't know if the troop fifteen is going to stay for the whole meeting. Y'all, okay, but we'll introduce the comments as code of announcement. Okay, agenda six. Consider authorizing Mayor Leader into a fact track with a company. Offer and offer LLC to conduct the annual city's audit for the 2022.
Hello, everybody, just one correction I'd like to make, Mayor. As of July 1st, Peruasolton, Alpern, Alpern has merged with Ericson, Crontel, and now we're, I'm a partner with that firm in Baton Rouge office, which will screw us off and offer and offer for operate pretty much as it always has, but we'll have a support of forty-five people from New Orleans to, if we get into any issues or areas that we don't have expertise. So the firm now going forward would be Ericson, Crontel, and that's who would be engaged with the other.
Will be noted.
So any questions regarding?
Just appreciate the work y'all do for us. It's always been thorough.
So one thing I will cover this year, the engagement letters that we put together and invited explorers to the mayor to consider for the auditing for the green report procedures that are required by legislative watcher. And this year, because y'all have the Alper funds and start to spend that money, we anticipate that y'all will be over the 750,000 limit and may require additional procedures to address those federal funds. And we're investigating the best approach, most economic approach. One, if it's one situation, you have to have, you have to do a single audit, they call it, which would require to test those specific funds. Or if this, just because of the new Alper funds that were due COVID, we may be able to do a lesser scope engagement, which is called an alternative compliance examination. So we think that's where y'all are going to fall, and we'll address that once we know the details.
Sounds good. Okay, any further questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ken. Motion, motion.
Yes, sir.
The, the motion is still on previous agenda item.
Call number six?
I'm looking up there.
You didn't keep?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we got four yays, one absent.
Okay, who made the motion?
I don't have a motion.
It has the mayor on it, Mr. Hubble.
Option number six.
I have the mayor where they vote and not Mr. Hubble. Okay, Ms. Lacy, you make the motion, who's second?
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilman Revere. Any objections? Hear enough?
So I'm looking at four yays and one absent, but I have.
Then I can get there.
All right, you missed the whole, all right, Ms. Brown, Ms. Lacy, and Mr. Revere. All right, thank you. Four yays, one absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, agenda seven, consider approving a resolution number two of 2023, requesting the support of the House Bill 14 of the 2023 regular session of Louisiana Legislature. And Council, what this was in reference to, one of the past council members presenting a proposal to the Louisiana Legislature concerning kind of.
Right.
And as we all discuss, supporting that particular bill, this is our disresolutions, and we support his action to present to the legislature for passing.
Move, sir.
I have motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Hubble, any objections? Hear enough?
Got four yays, one absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda eight, consider authorizing Mayor Lee to approve the payments to Barbara Brothers Construction for work done on stage eleven of the road rehabilitation program.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like me, Mayor, to go ahead and also mention this certificate of substantial completion? Or do you want to just wait for next, the next meeting?
You can wait and introduce.
Okay, because really, I guess technically these can all kind of go together, y'all. The certificate of substantial completion basically says that the contractor has performed enough of the work that you could use the, you know, the, what you paid for functions. And of course, this was a rogue overlaying program, and they have completed that. They do have a couple punch list items, ones a little milling on Blue Bell, which I haven't, I didn't have time today to check to see if he's done it yet. So again, how the substantial completion works is y'all authorize the mayor to sign, and he gives it to the contractor. The contractor files it, and in forty-five days, he'll have to wait to make sure no one has a lien on, on the contract. It's not very typical of a rogue program, because people like Barber Brothers don't buy from anybody. They just, they make their own asphalt and all that kind of stuff. And of course, I recommend that that is approved. And I guess simultaneously, at the end of a rogue program, a rogue program consists of a bunch of unit prices, and at the very end, they don't exactly agree with the estimate. You know, these are like very minuscule changes. And so we'd ask that also you approve the contract changeover, which is basically a decrease in the amount of $448.70, which is, you know, good, makes, makes us look like we're pretty good estimators. And the last would be the application for payment. Now, this will, again, will not be the last application for payment, because we hold retainage on these type of contracts. We're going to be, we'll hope $35,733.13. And if, you know, something isn't satisfactory or something, we can obviously use that money correctly. The pay app itself is a total of $321,598.17. I also recommend that, you know, you all approve it. One thing I wanted to mention on the substantial completion, what that does is it starts the one-year warranty period. So, you know, one year from now, if you have any failures or whatever, they have to come back. Any questions? Yeah, I guess, you know, if y'all could just approve it for the mayor's execution.
Good. Thank you.
Any motion?
I move.
I motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Revere. Any objections? Anybody from the public wants to be heard? Roll call.
Four yays, two nays, one absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda nine, consider authorizing Chief Hicks to hire Jones as bachelor on as step one, ten, grade A. You gonna roll number nine?
Yes.
Number nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I have a ten on my, on my sheet.
We took one out.
Good evening, how y'all doing? Oh, last week I presented Mr. Joseph Berg on hiring, as I explained. He had an excellent interview. He passed his matrix. I think he'll be a great asset to my department. And he introduced himself to y'all, you know, felt like y'all really felt his passion for the job, and I want to sit there behind him.
I have motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown. Any objections? Anybody from the public wants to be heard? Hear enough?
Four yays, one absent, motion passes.
Congratulations, Mr. Berg. Agenda ten, consider introducing the budget amendment to purchase new taser and body cameras from Exxon for the Port Island Police Department.
Again, last Wednesday, I presented a packet to y'all for the purchase of cameras and new cameras and new tasers for the police department. Mayor and Councilman Lacy had some questions. I reached out, I got Catherine Williams to reach out to Exxon, and they was able to send me a representative out here to talk to y'all. Any question that y'all had last week, so she can answer for y'all. Ms. Ashley, hit me.
Hello.
Hello.
So as you mentioned, I'm from the company Exxon. Our mission there is to protect life, not just of our officers, but also of the public. Today, we have brought you a proposal for body cameras and tasers in order to implement within the City of Port Island. As well, it comes with digital evidence management software in addition to that. Both programs are going to have a set annual price for you to review. That will give you a five-year contract at a fixed cost point.
So, but nothing written in stone with this just introduction tonight, so she will have some more numbers in the next.
Well, the packet that I gave you.
Yes, all of those numbers remain the same?
Yes, yes, sir.
What did you say about the storage and storage?
So it comes with our digital evidence management software system, which is a cloud-based storage solution in addition to software to review evidence as well as send it over to the district attorney's office. We matched the current storage pretty closely to what you guys have today to make sure that we were in a, number one, really budget-conscious spot, but also based on what your needs are for the department.
How long the storage remains, like, over five years, ten years, I don't even know.
So the contract you have is for five years of cloud-based storage. At the end of the contract, if for whatever reason you decided you wanted to part ways, let's say some new type of storage comes out between now and then, all of the evidence you own, so that would be yours to keep. You just need to maintain some type of license in order to access our platform to pull it up, but you would only need potentially one license to do so. In addition to that, you can download the evidence at any time. So it's completely yours, you guys own it, no one at Exxon has access to even look at it.
Versus what you have right now is how that differs from what we have, the city have now as it relates to the storage of evidence that's, you know, that comes from the body cams? What kind of, what we have?
This, this, I guess, is a more upgrade. Like I said, Captain Wade has the access of reviewing everything, saving it, say, like car accidents, also on the scene, I A investigations. So it'll probably be pretty much the same, but it'll be a little more.
What is it being saved now on the bottom?
Yeah.
The big difference between any other cloud-based solution and what Exxon provides is the software component. So we are a company that designs products bespoke for law enforcement. A lot of our competitors are in the radio space, they're in other types of entities that aren't necessarily customized to the workflows that they're going to be using every day on a day-to-day basis. Meaning, we're trying to save as many man hours as we can. We know that law enforcement is being asked to do a lot more with less. And so how can we cut out the fewest amount of button clicks possible and make it super simple? In order to send a piece of evidence to the district attorney's office with our platform, it's literally two button clicks and it gets sent off. In addition to that, there's different pieces of redaction software in case you needed someone's face to be removed from a video to release it to the public. And that situation, very time-consuming. With our software, a couple button clicks, and they're good to go.
Do y'all have any other agencies around that's using Exxon right now?
Yeah, there's quite a few of them. West Baton Rouge uses our platform. We just signed with Lakeview Parish Sheriff's Office just last month. I was just meeting with Papa Lucius, who's a big user of the product, Acadia Parish Sheriff's Office, but quite a substantial footprint in Louisiana.
That's West Baton Rouge Sheriff's Office?
Mm-hmm.
We already use Exxon currently. This is just upgraded equipment, newer models. Exxon is currently in contract with us.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, versus what we had now.
No, it's the same, it's the same company, same software. This is just new models of the taser and body cameras that they currently use. This is the taser ten, I think, is what they're going to. I'm not sure which number they have, they were purchased before I got here. But taser ten is the latest model of tasers. So they're just upgrading equipment to current new models.
Right.
Everything else is going to operate the same.
All right, that's the question that becomes one to answer. You know, is it every five years that we don't have to upgrade tasers? Because that's a big, big chunk of change that you're paying, you know, $162 for new cameras and new tasers, and you don't get nothing for the old ones. So what makes them obsolete?
Yeah.
Can you reuse them? Can you, what you do with the old equipment?
So we are currently buying back the teaser weapons that you're currently using in order to help offset the startup cost for the new weapon. It's really easy to think of tasers kind of similar to any other weapon on someone's tool belt or like a firearm. In reality, they're a lot more similar to a laptop, computer, or a cell phone. We've got high voltage electricity getting run through the weapon. So same as those electronics that you might have at home, they're going to degrade with time. Now, with that being said, the five-year recommended useful life is not an expiration date by any means. You're free to do whatever you like with the weapons. However, we know that if you hold on to the weapon based on all of our data over five years, it has twice a likelihood of failure. And unfortunately, when these weapons fail, it puts officers in a split-second decision where they're making a choice on what they're going to do next. And typically, that results in escalating worse. So what we want to make sure happens is that there's trust in the weapon, and the weapon's going to operate as it should. And the stamp that Axon, the line in the sand that we've put is at that five-year mark. It's very similar to other types of technology that they might use today. Ballistic vests is a good example. Same thing, it's tested, five years of useful life is the recommendation. You typically replace those around that same time period as well. But there's no one making a tournament, there's no expiration date on. It's just how do we make sure that they're going to operate as intended, knowing that it could be a life-or-death situation?
So the, the, the buyback that you mentioned, that's reflected in the cost that we were presenting?
Yep, it's over $100 per weapon that we're buying back from you guys to help offset the cost of the new program. In addition, the weapons that you guys are looking at is our teaser seven weapon, which is a upgraded model that provides more flexibility to the officers. So you have, number one, our darts are redesigned so that they're a lot straighter and a lot more accurate, so you can actually use the weapon in the way it was intended. Second is you're going to have two different types of cartridges. A lot of times when officers are using weapons, they're doing a little bit of geometry to make sure two probes land on the body in the correct way to get the desired effect they're looking for. With the teaser seven, you'll have the option, depending on how far you are away from a suspect, to make sure that you're optimizing that probe spread, getting that desired effect, so there's no escalation needed. As well, it's a smart weapon, so you have a lot more data at your fingertips. It can tell every time the weapon's being turned on. A lot of times, our law enforcement partners are turning on the weapon and de-escalating a situation without even deploying it. And that's an ideal situation that we'd love to happen. But today, we don't really get to capture that data and see how the weapon's being utilized. That would give you the ability to see how much they're truly using the weapon to de-escalate situations versus just deploying it. You'll have firing logs, everything at the fingertips, or the police department will have all of that at their fingertips to be able to increase training and make better decision-making.
Okay, as to teaser, what about the camera?
The cameras. Cameras is a great point, because we actually built in an inflation-proof upgrade program into the quote you have today. So you mentioned, after the camera goes bad, then what? Then we're going to be coming back and asking for more money. That's not how this program's set up. Every two years, the police department will get a brand-new set of cameras, included in that price you see today. So for the next five years, each officer on the department will get three cameras. That's going to make sure that they always have a full shift battery life, because a lot of times we're working 12-hour shifts. And we want to make sure we never miss a moment. And as well, if we come out with the newest camera, you have Axon Body Four on this quote. If we come out with the Axon Body Six by then, it's a free upgrade to whatever our newest technology is, which puts you in a little bit more of a sustainable spot over the next five years.
So the last time we had body cams was, what, new cam was twenty, about seventeen, five years ago?
Eighteen, twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty-eighteen. How could, I'm telling you this, how could storage be lost? How could you lose storage, how could you lose storage from the body cameras?
I guess, what do you mean lose storage, like lose a foot, a piece of video?
Yes.
So with the Axon Body Four cameras and our Axon Body Three cameras, you would have a redundancy on the camera itself that would prevent you from losing it. As well, you do have eighteen hours of video recall. So even if an officer isn't necessarily turning their camera on to record something, you would be able to pull that past twenty or eighteen hours of video footage from before that incident. you would be able to pull that past twenty or eighteen hours of video footage from before that incident happened. It won't have audio on it, but you'll be able to see what happened in that scenario. In addition to that, this, um, product has respond on it as well, which will include a ability for you to see all the officers on the map and tell when their body cameras are being turned on. So, command staff dispatch would be able to tell when a video is actually being taken in order to make sure that that follow-up is happening after the shift. But we typically don't see any situations where body camera footage is lost based on that redundancy that we added to the Axon Body Three camera, where it's actually stored on the camera itself in addition to that docking.
And that's the upgrade one we're speaking of? The one we have, the one we have currently is just not that advanced?
You're doing the Axon Body Two is what you currently have. And what we're talking about today is the Axon Body Three camera. So, it's two models advanced. This one has a longer shift battery life, so it has over twelve hours of battery. It has a little bit wider of a field of view so that you can see more when it's on the officer's chest. And it does have what's called a watch-me button on it as well, which can be enabled. That would allow him to know, or anyone on command staff to know, when an officer needs support or wants an extra set of eyes to look at a scenario. Maybe provide training, maybe call for backup.
And what you tell me, uh, if it's two thousand and eighteen, that's when we just, uh, went Axon?
That's, that's when we, the.
The two?
Yeah, two thousand and eighteen.
We bought it in two years. Uh, we bought the first in eighteen, I think the second in nineteen. We bought eight the first year and, and eight the second year.
Who was it before that?
We had, that was our first year we purchased.
What, eighteen?
Hmm, sixteen.
Two.
Two thousand and eighteen, they purchased eight. Two thousand and nineteen, purchased seven, eight, for sixteen total cameras. But that was the first deployment of body cameras amongst this force.
Any other?
There was some discussion last week on, uh, what we're gonna do, have a whole, I believe, a, a, what was his suggestion?
My preference is just, you know, since they can be upgraded every two years anyway, correct?
Yeah.
It can be really beneficial for training, um, because it is a lift to obviously make sure that everyone is up to speed on the new technology. And so, being able to do the entire course at once versus splitting it and constantly having someone who's new to the technology can be a big advantage, especially on the taser side.
I think what Mr. Hubble was talking about is the cost. I think the tasers will be purchased first and then the cameras will be purchased in February, if I'm, I'm mistaken?
It is, it was broken down in a, in yearly package.
Right.
So, get, one is gonna be covered, the cameras gonna cost this price. Taser's gonna be cost that price in, in, in each year.
Yeah.
That was eighty-one hundred, uh, February twenty, twenty-four. And eight thousand, uh, for July twenty, twenty-four.
Yeah, so that can be a, a way to bridge the gap, obviously, to make sure that the capital outlay doesn't all hit at once. We can spread it exactly.
So, we're looking at body cams first or taser first?
Uh, the one for July is the.
Do you have it?
The one that I have here, the one that's for July, is the body cameras.
Body cameras, right. And that was a total of how many? Eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah.
Eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two cents.
And that as well comes with two spare cameras in addition. So, sixteen plus the two spares, eighteen.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be the same number for the February twenty-fourth for the tasers?
Tasers cost, uh, their highest would be eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Wait, now, a total of eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Well, we don't pay taxes, so.
Yeah, we just need an updated tax information certificate. It looks like mine has.
So, it'll be, it'll be eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
And that's the eighteen, too, you said?
I'm, I'm like a motion to go ahead and, uh.
Introduce?
Yeah.
And, wait a minute, and this, these will be when, what's that?
That's a, that's a time that the, I don't know when they're gonna deliver, but this is the time, the payments, the first payments due in July and the second payment due in February.
It's customizable based on their training needs. As far as delivery, it's customizable depending on their training needs as far as delivery date. So, the payment is the most important part to make sure it aligns with your budget, but we can work with them on delivery.
Keep in mind that.
As of right now, do all the officers have tasers? As of right now, we all have tasers. And everybody has body cams.
So, keep in mind that it takes sixty days to do a budget commitment. So, February's gonna be here before you know it. So, uh, if you're gonna make a, do a budget commitment, do a, do, at least do one that's gonna cover your first two payments. Still doesn't make you do now, but you don't have to do this again. You don't have to re-advertise, you know, and, and, and go back to the drawdown door and refresh everyone's memory as to what you're trying to do.
Just a couple of make a motion.
I got a motion by Councilman Hubble.
Here, you did it on the screen?
No.
I'll say it.
Second by Councilman Bier. Any objections? Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Here it up?
And it will be for the sixteen thousand.
Correct.
Douglas four yeas, one absent, most passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubble.
Thank you, Chief.
Does anyone mind if I give like a call or something?
Yeah, let's get some.
All right, Agent Nine Eleven, consider authorizing mayor Lee to advertise for three part-time positions in open drains to form from this date of power until the end of twenty twenty-three. Council, what they said each year, um, since we didn't have any student workers, uh, this year, restarting the, uh, part-time workers for the end of the year. As you know, it's the high grad season, a lot of rain, and you have a lot of work to be done anytime. And, uh, we do have one full-time position available and hopefully, you can, uh, uh, fill that position, one of these three part-time workers as we see highly progress, uh, through the remainder of the year. I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Lacy. Any objections? Anyone wish to be heard? Here it up?
Four yeas, one absent, most passed.
Thank you. Agent Nine Twelve, considering the following vehicles, uh, for surplus. This is a two thousand and eleven white Chevy Tahoe, VIN number one G. Has George and Nancy, L A can see Charlie, two, Y E C O zero zero, B boy R Romeo, two, three, zero, eight, eight, five. And the second vehicle is a O four ten J Baco. Serial number T Tom, zero, four, one, zero, E X, eight, nine, five, three, six. Four vehicles are not old in use and we wish to put them in surplus. Motion by Councilman Review, second by Councilman Brown. Any objections? Out, second by Councilman Lacy. Any objections? Hearing none, anybody wish to be heard? Here it up?
Four yeas, one absent, most passed.
Agent Nine Thirteen, condemnation, attorney of operations not here today, so we'll bypass that. Agent Nine Fourteen, alcohol and beverage permits.
None pending.
Thank you. Agent Nine Fifteen, an honest and correspondent. Council, we have troop fifteen. Y'all come forward, identify yourselves and tell who you are. Uh, and the Scout Masters?
Yeah, we, uh, as citizen scout masters, so have seen back here. All of you guys are, are, uh, high-ranking scouts working on our citizenship in the community, merit badge. If I could address the council.
All right, please, sir. Identify yourself.
Um, my name's Douglas Andrew Thompson. I am the current senior patrol leader of troop fifty out of Baton Rouge. And we're here today for our citizenship in the community, merit badge, making sure, um, we get everything signed off. And, um, hopefully, we can talk to y'all about a couple of things. Um, some issues going on here in Port Island today, what we can do to help them, making sure that we, the youth, are involved in the stuff that is on in our government today. So, that's how it is.
So, if, if there was a specific question, all of these guys are supposed to ask, uh, you know, what, what are some of the issues with the community? Not so much negative, but, you know, issues in the community, uh, outreaches, uh, different programs that we have. And, uh, what the city council, the city offers to, to that effort. And then, how could younger people offer their services? Doesn't have to be scouts, but the younger generation coming up. We're, we're building model citizens here, so give them a little, a little, a little direction, you know, what can they be doing towards, you know, each one of them has a, a separate issue. I don't know how much time we got, but it's, uh, we could, we could push it to after if a couple of you would, would be willing to, uh, just being a little, probably a minute per question.
I'm interested in this.
Yeah, okay, well, guys.
Yes.
You got their attention. So, any more questions?
All right, so, um, my issue that I'd like to bring to y'all is, um, currently, or recently, the governor of Louisiana, John Belair Bruce, has signed into, um, or a, via a bill from the Congress of Louisiana about the transgender youth in our, in our state and, um, the gender-affirming healthcare that they can receive and how it'd be stopped. One, or if they're currently receiving it, be stopped one year after and then not current, not having a star on it. I just wanna see, um, how, how us, the youth, can, um, participate in this issue and make sure everything's, has moved out, everything gets taken care of.
My thought would be con, my initial thought would be contact your, um, legislative re- representative. I mean, you, you live in Baton Rouge, so that encompasses a pretty large area. But, uh, are you aware of who your state rep and the state senator are all? And you, I, I would think, contact them and make your feelings clear. It's easy enough, uh, if you're gonna, I forget what the exact legislature, legislature dot gov. But, uh, yeah. Thank y'all.
Okay.
My question for y'all is.
What's your name on that?
My name is Daniel Thompson. And, uh, how can us use help to get rid of some of the homeless on our streets and how to help them get on their feet? And what branch would help do that?
You, um, are you familiar with St. Vincent de Paul? Which is headquartered on, uh, St. Vincent de Paul Place in Florida Boulevard?
Not really.
Okay, they have, they have ample opportunities for everyone, not only young people, to volunteer. Whether it's serving lunch, they have things at Easter, Christmas, Thanksgiving, and everything like that. Because if you're down there about eleven o'clock to one o'clock, that street is packed with a line of people going in to receive food. And they sit down and that's their dining room table. Then they have other outreach programs that St. Vincent de Paul does. I'm familiar with that one because my wife works there. But the, uh, that would be a good source to see where you can utilize your talents and your time. And there are always welcoming volunteers, believe me, because there's never enough.
They have a program where they can stay overnight or something like that?
Yeah, they have shelters too. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I would look at that to see what. When you get in the shelters and everything, you, you do have some security issues. So, those are things that you would have to talk with them and see how you can become involved to lend a helping hand. But that would be one way for you to reach out to the community.
Thank you.
And for the city of Port Allen, we don't necessarily have anything in place, but we have a lot of organizations in the city that goes and feed the homeless uh, over there in the same area that Mr. Hubble is, uh, speaking of. So, I'm sure some of the organizations, if y'all get your skits, I definitely could get you connected with some of those organizations that does provide holidays, um, most of the time, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, my name is Jeremy Gavin. And recently, there's somebody who was hit by a car while he was riding his bike. And he was severely injured and had to rush to the hospital because he's wearing dark clothing and riding in the middle of the street. And he had no lights on his bike or anything. And I'm just curious if there's anything that we could, what we could do to help us, help songs?
To help that certain individual?
No, like, because recently, perhaps I say this, but recently, this been happening more often that people are getting hit by cars or riding their bicycles.
Maybe do some awareness and education about, uh, bicycling and, uh, the importance of wearing and crossing clothing. And, um, definitely where to ride, them understanding where to ride. I would say that I could see with that just education and awareness to people that rarely use bicycles as a form of transportation. Maybe whoever provide those bicycles, like downtown, we don't have that either, but maybe that'd be a, a good place to start.
And also, you can implement bike paths and so forth that the bicycles can ride instead of riding the roadway. It's a vehicle just like a, a car. And they have to, uh, or maybe, the same rules as a vehicle stops on trail lights and so forth. But just like, uh, Councilman Lacy says, about education. It's about wearing your proper clothing at late at night because bicycles don't have, uh, lighting or, or brake lights, anything of that nature. But they got to be aware of their, their surroundings. But the, uh, and, and same to what Baton Rouge is doing now. It is making the road safer for the bikers, bus, green light pass along the edge of the road.
Yeah, so continue to lobby, uh, local politicians, state politicians, see if they, uh, buy some more monies to help speed up the process by?
Yeah, you need, so when you look taking a bicycle, bicycle ridership has drastically increased over the past few years. You go through a driver's ed program for a vehicle. Uh, it's like, uh, Clarice said, you need to have some kind of avenue where there's some education on bike riding. And, uh, one of the most important things is reflective clothing, clothing. And I can remember back in the day, and this is long before you were born, but the, uh, we had to have a light, a little light on the, uh, on our bicycles. You know, and if, if you were riding at night. But we, back then, we didn't have bike lanes. And that's like the mayor said, that's, that's an urban planning thing that if you look at Government Street, uh, Goodwood Boulevard, all of those have very nice bike lanes. So, that would be something that, uh, you could maybe suggest to. So that would be something that uh, you could maybe suggest to your area. You from Baton Rouge?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that type of thing. Port Boulevard, I believe that's the same thing. So those are, those are things, cause traditionally, if you had bike lanes, it does slow down traffic. That's just a psychological thing for some reason.
And just like Brandon was saying, tapping into your funding, like maybe create, even create a program where you all give out reflectors. Or, you know, just making, don't have them, and you just want to promote safe, safety. So hey, you offer them two or three reflectors, they can put two on the front, two on the back, and that may be a good idea.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Rex May, and I would like to ask y'all about what us, the youth, can do to significantly reduce litter in Port Island.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Well, you know, that's an individual thing. I always said, uh, if somebody, there's so many people out there that say, that's not my job, that's the city's job. Well, no, it's everybody's job. If, if you went into, let's say, your room at your house, if I dumped a garbage can in it full of garbage, would you like him?
Yes, sir.
Well, you see, there are other people that expect our whole community, all over, to live in that. I watched one the other day on Perkins and College just throw out chicken out, out the door. And believe me, I was close to stopping him, but I couldn't get close to him, cause I'm gonna pick it up and throw it right back in their window.
Okay.
The, the, the thing about it, you know, you know how much the state of Louisiana spends on litter abatement a year? Fifty million dollars. Do you think that fifty million dollars could be better served somewhere else? Because this is people that are just being careless. Now, they're not gonna dump this at their own house. That's why they use the roadways. The other downside of litter is, let's say you're a young family, you have a young family. And you're coming into a community, but it's litter. Would you say, man, this looks great, this looks like a great place to live? It's all clean and everything? No, you wouldn't, and nobody else would in their right mind would. So who loses? The city loses. They're losing tax, tax dollars, community support, civic support. So litter is a job, litter abatement is a job for everybody. There's nothing wrong, if you see something, I live right down here, I'll pick up on Court Street. I don't have any problem doing it, I don't like to do it, but I picked up a dirty diaper. Well, I'm past dirty diapers. Now, I got grandkids, but I don't do diapers. But there was one just out in, somebody threw it out in Court Street. I go over there and pick it up. I go up and pick up a lot of things. If everybody just took a little time and picked up those things, how better would we be? So that's an, it's an individual thing. Again, we get back to education. And people don't realize what it costs the governments, what it costs mayor, well, how many, how much time do you think our roads and drainage have to pick up, they didn't even cut the grass? That's pretty sad. You know, I don't, by my lots, I don't have to pick up, I just cut the grass. Well, that's time lost. Again, think of that fifty million dollars, I'm sure it's going up. So I think that would be better served on things like we were talking about homeless and all that, I believe that could be spent on that.
And this, you know, it, it wouldn't, I guess it wouldn't help litter directly, the litter problem directly, but you know, possibly, are you from West Baton Rouge? Yes, no?
From Baton Rouge or Port Island?
Oh, Baton Rouge. Cause I mean, there's an organization, and I'm sure there is one in East Baton Rouge as well. And West Baton Rouge, Keep West Baton Rouge Beautiful, and you know, they can always, uh, they have lots of information. And uh, again, I'm thinking, East Baton Rouge has another, you know, something similar. So maybe contact them and just, you know.
Baton Rouge has a Keep Tiger Town vehicle.
Keep Tiger Town, there you go, so, something to keep in mind, volunteer with them on, you know, so, anyway.
And every now and then we do have, like where we uh, connect with Keep West Baton Rouge Beautiful and have a day where we go out. Ms. Rose, Roche, right here. Ms. Rose?
Yes, ma'am.
So you can know who you are.
Yes, ma'am. We, we do have a, a cleanup campaign in, in West Baton Rouge, so I'm sure they have it in East Baton Rouge.
And she's very inspirational, like on those days, we have cleanup day, if you all want to come out and help clean up, that'd be a way to get involved, like in, in contact with the organization that, that does those cleanup days.
And Lieutenant Governor's Office also supports, um, you know, not, not littering, so they also have continuous campaigns. And there's one month, one campaign they really do during the month of uh, March and April of every year, of awareness about not littering.
To show you how much difference it makes, uh, the man back here that told you it is Tiger.
I, Keep Tiger Town Beautiful.
Keep Tiger Town Beautiful. That was started by one woman. And then it just multiplied. People started seeing her pick up stuff on busy intersections, they said, how can we help? And it's just mushroom. I don't know the membership now, but it was started by one woman.
Well, that's kind of what I wanted to just suggest to, uh, and y'all just continue to believe us and, you know, talk to your peers, your younger siblings, plant the seed. You know, uh, be the example, y'all will see.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Joshua Jones, and I would like to see what they have for programs for the elderly and how young people can help.
No particular.
Okay, we have council agent at West Baton Rouge Parish, um, and they're always, um, searching for volunteers. Uh, there's a lot of special programs. I saw when they had bingo night in the library, I think, uh, a few nights ago. The city do programs, uh, with the elderly, um, to get folks volunteer. All you have to do is, is look at the agency and just show up. There's always something going on that there's, that they want to get you involved with, with the elderly. But the museum, on, on this side of the river, our museum, our library, as well as uh, our council occasion, are continuously working. I know East Baton Rouge Parish does the same thing on a mug's larger scale. They even did the, the big skip day. Where they were gonna close down, I think Plank Road, but because of the rain, they had to do it in Southern, uh, FG Park Activity Center. And the seniors just absolutely enjoyed it. So almost anything you want to get involved in, helping the seniors, all you got to do is just find a program and show up. They'd love to have you involved.
Are you looking to, um, help some of the seniors citizen? Cause I do have something in mind. A lot of our senior citizens, if they were just speaking about the high grades, they can't afford to get their grades cut, and we've been, I've been thinking about ways how we can really help them. You know, we have an inspector, a city inspector that goes around, he kind of, um, he gotta give us an account and a report of some of the people in the city that have high grades, and some of those people are senior citizens. So I definitely will, you know, wanna try and implement some type of program where we can help our senior citizens with their high grades. Because you know, high grades provoke rodents, and, and, and we just wanna try and get, uh, you know, tap of that. If, you know, so I, I'm definitely interested, maybe teaming up, getting a team of young men, of young women that with, with the instrument and take a get at that, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Jar, sir.
Thank y'all.
Kevin, thank you. I should we come back, uh, up here again and, uh, thank y'all for y'all's time and, um, those insights on what we're supposed to be doing, say thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. And the scout leaders, y'all do it by yourselves?
Yeah, I'll turn the mic real quick. Uh, my name is Kevin Jones. I do live on Avenue G. Uh, my mom's Judy Jones, listen, you know the way I'm sure you do this, though, uh, mostly. Also, uh, she, uh, she, she's in a better place now, and she would be very proud of what you guys are doing with the city. My, my grandfather was Claybur, and he was well involved with uh, police jury at the time, I can remember. It was hours, you know, every weekend over there, grandma would be in the police jury, what do they call it, the uh, Tia's Restaurant. They'd have all the, the old bin, canvasel, and they discussed the city's business and what needed to happen, so. Yeah, this is a full circle for me, my son Joshua right there, these guys have been working hard on citizenship and community, nation and world over the last, um, couple of years. And this is one of the final things that they have to do is to come forward to a council meeting. Be at the city, a couple of different things, but this, this felt right, it worked out with our days, we were working on, uh, meeting the evenings, so. Thank y'all.
So congratulations to y'all. Remember this, you're our future.
Good job, guys.
Good job, man. Thank y'all. Alright, I got another announcement, uh, that's on my table, stuff us. It's the twenty twenty-three collection day, it begins in July the twenty-sixth, from six AM to five thirty PM. Uh, here in, uh, at the Walmart in Port Island, two thirty-five L A one. And also at the Walmart on College Drive. So uh, please help out the students as they begin their new school year, and um, please come out and help with it. Anybody else had anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, this is the one that Channel Two does with the, uh, and they, they've been doing it for years, and we got it over here on West Baton Rouge, on the west side. Uh, and we'll sit on television the whole day. Uh, we, they, they all, they always need volunteers to come out and help as well as folk bringing their money, to remind your friends. It's just a great, uh, project that they, they raise a lot of money and have a lot of supplies, uh, to help the schools.
And I think Ms. Consey has another talk, uh, at Community Center, help you.
Uh, there will be a health fair and a back to, a health back to school fair on next Wednesday at the community center. Uh, tickets from ten to two, and it's sponsored by Humana. So uh, if anybody want to pass through there, it's, it's gonna be a great program where they'll be getting the kids ready for school, giving them school supplies and doing health checkups for them.
I was just, I was questioning, Mr. Tony gone, but that's who this is on the trial? I, I figured that you were.
And Rose, I used some more information, but it's out there now, we're not even giving to you in time, but August sixth. Uh, we're also having a back to school event. At La Bella's Hair and Beauty Salon, right here on Jefferson Avenue, we're doing free haircuts, free braids, um, nail art. We have a lot of vendors out there, so we're looking forward to be a real big event.
It's August sixth?
August the sixth, from twelve to five, at seven twenty-four North Jefferson, across the community center, the salon.
How long you think it took to take my hair? Five minutes?
I was just letting, I was going to walk the manager out. Who's more, uh, educated and knows areas, I just let them take care of everything, but I, I can't, can't.
I was just looking at the.
Don't leave it up to me.
I was looking at the troop out here and said, man, I'm jealous, I wish I had that hair.
You did.
I did, one time.
Like, you know, you got your sunroom back with your windows.
That's alright, that's right. And this is troop fifty, you said?
Fif, five zeros.
So thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all very much. I'm Zella from Georgia, okay, I'm saying, I got a motion by Councilman Revere, seconded by Councilman Brown.